All the city commission meeting to order charter review. It will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Linnlaw.
Here.
Commissioner Cadagano.
Here.
And Commissioner Hyatt.
Here.
Chairman Taylor.
Oh.
You're up.
For the record, Commissioner McGee did call in.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Ricky Taylor, Chairman of the Charter Review Committee. Over the past 11 weeks, the committee has reviewed and discussed the current charter. At this time, we have prepared the draft 2024 charter for your review, comments, and suggestions. On page one, they just crossed out 2014 and put 2024. So that was just a date change, and I'm sure that's something Simpson would be doing himself when he creates the final draft. If we move over to page two, down to E. We had wrote it that way and took out policymaking is the sole prerogative of the commission. And let it continue with city administrator, manager, or manager, whether hired or appointed under the terms of this charter, is subordinate to the elected officials whose power derives from the consent of an election by citizens of the city of Oak Hill. Believe that was in the 04 charter, but was taken out in 2014. Any questions?
Not so far.
Okay. I was leaving it open in case there was question for that.
Would it be appropriate that the city attorney also agreed? Would that be possible?
He just agreed that to remove policymaking is the sole prerogative of the commission. That was Simpson's suggestion. He said that it opened up a broad range of meanings by putting the word policy. Moving on. Throughout this charter, we had changed to where it said administrator and put slash Because it was mentioned that possible opportunity for a city administrator to also be a city manager. And that if it's in the charter as being administrator slash manager, it could give the commission option to choose one or the other. So without us choosing one or the other, the committee chose to put both in there to bring to you to decide. Section 4.04, they took out just the word or and put and slash or. Moving on to section 4.06, line B, they took out the word consecutive so that it reads has three unexcused absences from a regular scheduled commission meetings, and we added per term of office.
We're going to. Wouldn't, was there any consideration for per year rather than per term?
I agree.
I'm only saying that because, I mean, I've never had to call in, but there are instances, especially if anybody's in the commission that has children and something happens to one of their kids, the thing that's on that person's mind is that job, not calling in. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
And I think, I think per term is just way, way too far. That's just me.
I agree.
Yeah, I think it is a little bit stretched out there.
It does, but it also says unexcused.
Yeah.
So anything that has to do with a kid or family member, that would be up to the commission to whether they choose to excuse it or unexcuse But if you would like us to take a look at that?
I'd like it better if it said per year.
Per year?
Yeah, I tend to agree. And mainly from the standpoint of what comes before the commissioners on a annual basis. Because certain things are required by law. If the individual misses it this week, next month, it comes back up, he misses that one or she. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And so I just think it reads better per year, myself.
Me too.
So by changing that, you would end up with basically the potential for somebody to miss 12 meetings, right?
Unexcused meetings.
Unexcused meetings. That seems like a lot. Like somebody probably wouldn't be too into their job if they did that.
That's a lot. I guess we need to make a motion and then vote for that to be changed to per year?
Can we make a motion?
You can.
Okay, I will.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second and a motion. Any further discussion?
One committee member would like to speak.
You already fixed what I've done.
Okay.
Vote.
Call for the vote.
Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linnlaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Cadagano?
No.
Commissioner Hyatt?
As far as throughout this charter, we went in and changed it from administrator slash manager. Do we have an issue with that being written that way throughout the charter?
What was the reason for doing it that way?
It was brought up that for a particular manager, city manager, they would have more recognition, a better title for it to say manager instead of administrator for functions and events and.
Other cities in Belushi County have managers, not administrators. Daytona has a strong mayor, so the mayor controls that city. I think manager would fit with what the other cities and down the road, even down the road, 10, 15 years from now, city manager would still fit, even though there's two definitions for administrator and manager. In our case, the manager runs the city. That's just my two cents.
That's what we hired him to do.
If we used manager in here, do we need to include that definition in this, or is it good wherever it is? I don't, I'd never seen the difference between the twos. Would we need to?
Commissioner, I've never seen it any other way, just manager. Even.
Right, I'm asking about the definition.
The other cities, they put a definition of what that job is.
Gotcha.
We were advised during our meeting that regardless of the name that you used, it all comes down to the charter and what the duties and responsibilities are for that position.
So do we need to, oh, okay, you changed it there too on the 6.01.
It's throughout the whole charter.
Gotcha.
But if you guys wanted to vote for one or the other.
Simpson said that the definition was adequate between the two names.
Gotcha.
I don't think there's enough of a difference between the two to make.
I don't have a problem with administrator-manager is fine.
So we would need to make a motion for that to change to take off administrator and just keep it manager or leave both?
We're leaving it.
We're leaving it like you did it.
All right.
Yes, like it reads.
Moving on to section 6.02, we've removed the words to be done, which you see in the red line running through. Committee didn't think it needed to be in there or written.
Under C, it should be partake, not partake. I'm sure that's just typing error. It's one word, partake.
Make it one word, C. All right. In 6.02, we moved on to F, which we took F and combined it with H. And then we've removed submit to the city commission and make available to the public a complete report on the finances and administrative activities to the commission at the end of each fiscal year of each quarter. So we crossed that out and just made it keep the city commission fully advised as to the financial conditions and future needs of the city through a report on the finances and the administrative activities at least quarterly, and submitted an audit annual report to the So F would read that way, and we would take away how H was written, and then move it down to continue with H on another line.
Well, an annual audit's required by the state.
Yes.
So this is kind of redundant.
I believe they wanted to make it so that at least the commission would be fully advised at least quarterly additionally to the annually.
That's good.
On 6.03 removal, it says the city commission may remove the administrator slash manager at any time with or without cause. Kind of have a problem with the without cause part of that statement because, you know, you wouldn't want a city manager to be fired because somebody doesn't like the way they park their hair or something that they wore. So to me, you really have to justify a reason for letting the city manager go.
Of course.
Which would be with cause, because you would have a reason for it to be done. So I don't know how the others feel about that, but that's just my personal opinion.
Typically, you have four commissioners and one mayor that would all have to agree with whatever issue the commissioner would have with the manager or administrator.
Well, I don't disagree with that part of it. I'm just saying I find the without cause to be a little ambiguous to be able to terminate somebody's employment just because they don't like them or don't want them or whatever reason. That's just my personal opinion. I don't know how the rest of.
I believe we looked it up also, and it's in a lot of charters throughout all the cities.
I think without cause needs to be struck. I tend to agree with the vice mayor.
Mr. Smothers would like to speak.
Because if there's something bad enough that a commissioner or a group of commissioners wants to fire, there should be enough evidence to come to that conclusion without, you know.
Plus it takes the majority.
And here's one of the things that gets really touchy, is you've got to be really careful what you accuse other people of doing.
Without evidence.
Yes.
Because that could come around and bite us in the.
Yeah, well, with a lawsuit.
This clause isn't going to protect us from that, though. It's a, I think this should be in there just because it's in every other contract that we enter into, and there's no difference between that and the contract that we enter into with the city administrator. The checks and balances that are in place for that would be the rest of the commission, you know, all having to agree to that.
Well, it doesn't say the commission may. It doesn't say three to two, four to one.
Only on the incoming side, did you notice that? It really does. On the incoming side, it takes four votes, but on the outgoing side, it doesn't actually specify. Maybe that's what we need to change.
You know, it's something that struck me as I'm just sitting here reviewing this thing again, that it doesn't.
Because I think four coming in and should be four going out.
Four going out. I agree.
Me too.
I think the term's majority, isn't it? The legal term, majority?
I think in our charter, though, didn't it say four on the incoming side? You know, when you're hiring one?
Commissioners, this has been discussed with the attorney over and over and over, that without cause needs to stay in there. So if you terminate for cause, then you got to prove it in court.
Yeah.
And that's something you want to avoid in all possibilities. Plus, the administrator or the manager usually has a contract, and all the terms and conditions are put in that contract where a regular employee is not considered or hired that way. They just go under state laws. So it's, you have to be careful when you say, when you have to have a cause to terminate. Florida's a, you know, work it will state where you don't even have to have a cause to terminate anybody that's working for you.
Thank you, Darwin.
Just one other comment on that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So one thing that this, by changing that could lead up to, because I, something that would be incompatible between the commission and the city manager would be like a basic philosophical difference, where that not necessarily would be like a cause for, you know, just because the person thinks a certain way isn't, but it would still be a valid move because, like, you know, it could be over development or, you know, a traffic light or any degree, you know, a general personal belief, you know, that the commission itself or the city, you know, the citizens of the city don't necessarily agree with or something. That would be a. A situation where I think that would be best left alone the way that it is right now. Because it's not hurting anything like that. It's not like everybody's all of a sudden go around firing somebody. You know? It's been like that. Just, that's all.
Mr. Cummins has a.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Derry Cummins, 131 Wyatt Street. State of Florida is a right-to-work state, and you can basically fire anybody for anything. But the only thing they can take you to court for and usually win is discrimination, race discrimination, or age discrimination. That's why Florida's a right-to-work state. They can fire you if they don't like your shoes. They can fire you for anything. So that's why we left the charter like it was, because it would, you know, it's really too hard to prove anything unless it's race or age when you talk about going to court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummins.
Thank you.
Well, do we want to add in there that that takes the commission four to one vote? Or just leave it as it is?
What if, what if it comes up and there's only three commissioners here? I think we'd maybe just leave it alone, and it'll be fine.
What about the other side then? Incoming?
I mean, because it requires.
Oh, yeah. Do we change that or just leave that?
Same thing.
It should probably be identical, I would think.
Yeah, should be.
So would we go with three or four if we changed anything?
Charter committee, basically, one, I know it would be pretty much majority rule, which is.
Three.
Three. And Mr. Simpson seemed to agree with us in reference to that.
Well, while it doesn't say in here in the charter, it is understood three to two is the majority, so.
Maybe we should just say.
Majority vote.
High-majority vote or something.
Yeah.
So wait, if it's five, if all five of us are here, that's okay, or four of us, or even just three of us. But the charter says if it's only three, that it has to be unanimous.
Yeah, because it has the definition for quorum in there?
Yeah.
Let's go with three then, whatever everybody's most comfortable with, you know? I'm good either way.
Yeah, go back and add the number of votes.
Well, then if y'all were to vote on this, then it would be changed.
If we just clarify, you're changing that to four to five on removal?
She was saying majority.
Like it is under appointment?
It should be the same, though.
Should be the same.
Should be the same, three on each one, is I think what we're agreeing with here. Is that right?
Yes.
Three, yeah, majority.
Three, three is the majority.
Okay, so the word majority. You just want the word majority added into it, like a majority vote?
I think that would be easier than a specific number.
Covers it all, doesn't it?
Does Scott look at this one more time?
Yeah, he'll look at it again.
Has he picked that up? We got that wrong or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes back for review.
Okay.
Before it goes anywhere.
Yeah, if y'all make a motion for that to be changed or added, then that will complete.
I'll make a motion for the word majority to be added in.
I'll second it.
We have a motion. Any further discussion?
No.
Call for the vote?
Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linnlaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Cadagano?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyatt? Yes.
the charter.
I was thinking I have one other comment.
Number four.
Section 703, where it says police.
Yes.
Understand that we obviously have to provide police protection for our citizens, but I think we also maybe should change that to public safety and add fire and EMS as well, because you're.
We don't have either one.
I know, but we refer to it here. So maybe we should add. Fire and EMS so that it's recognized in our charter.
Right, because it's basically putting the city on the hook for providing those services.
Well, not necessarily.
Not really, because we provide it with the county.
This section, it says there shall be a, the city of Oak Hill shall provide adequate police services.
Right.
That's putting us on.
That's our contract with the sheriff.
And our contract with the public as a city.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Let's probably put that out there and see what you guys think.
Yes, I agree. You know, you might as well add those other in, you know? Because it's something that we all want to do anyway.
I understand what you're, what you're wanting to do, but we were advised that if we put in there fire and anything that we don't furnish that the county is furnishing, now it gets to be in case of a lawsuit or something, is the city responsible for any of it? Because our charter says that we will provide it. So do we have to police the county now? This is stuff the attorney brought up. If you put it in there, then you're responsible for making sure it's done. And since we're not the people that's doing it, didn't want that in there that we'd be responsible for it.
Is this, Mr. Smothers, is this a holdover from the old one, we actually did have a police? Because why is it only police whenever we contracted the counties for all of our services, essentially, you know, regarding public safety?
We have a separate contract with the police department. I don't believe we have a separate contract.
Thanks for the county.
That's.
That's the difference?
That's by the county. We don't have a contract.
Okay, good. Yep, I see. Is that right, Mayor? We don't have a contract for fire services? It's just something that kind of happens on its own?
The volunteers at one point, and put firefighters there.
And Belushi County provides it.
So this is good.
Because it not only provides it for the city, but it also provides it for all beyond incorporated areas.
Conclaves and stuff. Yeah, okay.
So I think just leaving it the way it is.
I think so, yeah.
I was glad with that, I just wanted to bring it up so we'll talk about it.
Appreciate it, that's good.
That was the only other issue I had.
I spent the whole Saturday, 11 o'clock to 11:30 in the evening, looking at and watching all of this. The mayor seemed to be under the gun. The mayor has no right saying he didn't know. There are times in this commission meeting where people stand up, make a comment about something that's going on in this city, and I don't think anybody sitting on this commission has an answer. When it's directed to me, I'm not going to lie. If I don't know, I don't know. There was also other issues that the mayor's administrative duties. This charter says the mayor, whoever sits in this position, has no authority, no authority to do anything. Nobody changed anything this board. So y'all are satisfied with that piece of information. And I'll give you some background. When Khan left, I went in that office on the direction of this board. I wanted to know how much money we had. I had to go. I had to go and call the bank. The bank told me I didn't have any authority. They couldn't give me what was in the accounts, because I wasn't authorized. Myself, the Vice Mayor, and Mark Bell, because we needed a third to sign checks, went a week later. Now, I could look at the bank statement and tell you, this is how much money at the end of that month that was there. Fifteen days later, I couldn't tell you what was there. It was aggravating to me that whoever sits in this position is looked upon as being able to have all of the knowledge that's going on in that office. That ain't happened, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know whoever takes this job. If they work full-time, they can't be in that office full-time to know what's going on. And I've made the comment, and that was brought up during this meeting, you're only as good as the information that you're given. That wasn't found, it, it sounded like I was doing something wrong. I tried to figure out what the hell I could have done differently. Not a whole lot. Y'all had Ken Parker. Y'all had city attorney. Y'all had Edgewater's manager, Tracy Barlow, which gave you their advice, their information. Was it good enough? So we're only as good as the information we're given. And when we, as a committee, would ask Khan, when something came up to buy, is there money? Yes, there is. She had the authority. So we're gonna not believe her? Then why have her? Or have an administrator? Just have a commission-based government like Pearson has. They make all the decisions. It, it's kind of aggravating, and don't get me wrong, I sit up here in our chair quarterback, what's going on? And that's an easy thing to do, because we're human. We like some things, we dislike others. I asked that there be put something in this charter that gave this board the authority to terminate any commissioner that violated the ethics law and was convicted. Scott Simpson said, if my memory serves me right, you don't need to do that, it's in the state statutes. The state statute says you can call for a recall vote. Y'all know how much that costs? You have to have 70% of the voters. That's going out, knocking on every door, and getting them to sign a petition to remove a commissioner. I don't believe the size of this city, that should be the way it is. So on the advice of Scott, that was not followed up. And that's fine. Because I'm one of these crazy people that think if the law says this, then this is what you do. The ethics says y'all do not communicate with one another about anything that's going on here. Same with y'all board members. Not supposed to. I, when, when this charter review came up and I read it, it was almost like, not a whole lot was changed. I don't know the reason why. I think down the road, there's gonna be changes that are gonna be made as things happen in this city. And one thing good about it, that charter can be changed. You know? I, I asked Jerome if he knew what it would cost to put this on the ballot. And, and right now, he hasn't got an answer back from Lisa Lewis. But they told Jerome it'd be by the number of pages. Well, there's 10 pages. But I don't think they gave you a dollar figure, did they? Yeah, so. From my standpoint, everybody's happy with it the way it is, except for tweaking a couple of things. We move forward.
I got a question, if I may.
Yes?
One thing we didn't bring up tonight, that we brought up in our committee meeting, was in regards to language, we talked about a current map. And that would need to be included. Jerome, have you got an answer back from the state yet?
Boundary map, was it?
Yeah. Index language isn't really clear about that. I mean, we could change language to any map. We could change that part, but...
Yeah, I haven't gotten anything back from them regarding that as yet. But we had talked about it at the last charter review meeting.
Would you like volunteers, I'm good if you know, like that kind of stuff.
Duran has some more information, she can clarify for us.
Hi, I'm your appendix A buddy.
Can you come to the podium for me, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay. It was my fault we found what was added. When we began our trip down memory lane here and finding things out, we got to this section and it said, "See Appendix A on file at the city clerk's office." So because I read that, I turned around and said, "Can you give me Appendix A?" And everyone looked at me and we all went, "Uh." And there were no words. Aaron looked for Appendix A, and it's kind of like looking for a unicorn, it doesn't exist. That led to, what do we do, how do we change it? Discussions were made of whether we could use a map of the city's boundaries. If I'm not mistaken, maybe you can correct me, but if I'm not mistaken, the attorney said that he did not think that a map would do. As he understood it, that we would have to have the legal meets and bounds. In my research, the last legal meets and bounds for our charter was from Jerome 1994, correct?
Yes.
And that was the only one we could find. Mr. Adams did contact the company. There was a letter that went with it when I found it on the internet. And unfortunately, that State Department no longer exists.
Of course.
Of course it does. If it existed, we could call them and go, "Hey, guys, have we been doing this?" So the problem with that Appendix A and finding that information with the meets and bounds is that the most recent one we have in detail that we can fit our hands on is from 1994. So I think the decision was made when we talked about the attorney. He said basically, "It's not a part of your charter." And honestly, that was 25 or 30 pages long in 94. It would be incredibly difficult to put it in here. However, the attorney also said, "We do need to get one. It's, it's a requirement, we need to have that." So that's where we left that. Mr. Adams was gonna see how we get that 1994 meets and bounds updated, because that's obviously, that obviously changes quite a bit with, you know, every time. Yes, that's what we're changing. So that was, that was sort of where we left it. Yes, we know we need an Appendix A. If we're gonna say in the charter that it's on file with the city clerk's office, we should probably have it. Just aside. But that was how all that happened.
Did you happen to check with any of the other cities to see if they have the same issues that...
Lake Helen actually has their entire 30-page meets and bounds in their charter.
Oh, really?
Right.
Yeah. But we can't do that, because ours hasn't, as far as we can tell, unless the mayor knows something none of us were able to find. We will not be able to find anything updated since the 1994.
Yeah, we want to add that, since it's so old.
Back a few months ago, I can't remember how many, but there was a thing that came before us about voting for $20,000 for Kimberly Horn to update our future land use map with GIS to a GIS format? I don't know if that means, because that was something where you could click on it and get all of this information and stuff like that. Did that, does that have the information that we would need?
Scott?
I got an answer for that one. I went to county mapping department and provided a copy of that to our city clerk.
Can you open the podium, please?
Oh. Ah, they gotta put me on camera.
I can't think you're on the...
You're on camera, anyway.
The answer is relatively simple. I'll get to it in a moment. But I went to the county mapping department. They have something called GIS, Government Information Services. And each of the services that it provides are created on levels. Everything from zoning to streets, roads, I mean, everything, to include future land use designations. That's just a myriad of layers that are part of that mapping department. The gentleman that was, was obviously in charge of that department. And on that document that I brought back for the city, bottom left-hand corner says, "Created by Kimberly Horn." Is that your answer?
Well, I was actually wondering if the, whatever it is that's required for the charter, you know, that's like a description with like north by something, something by this and that, right?
Needs and bounds description.
Is that, is that what it is? So when Needham Hunt made that for us, did they include that information in with that map, or?
Well, the answer, listen to this thought. Nobody else does it, nobody else can do 30 pages and meets and bounds description. My thought is relatively simple. We have a map created by the county with a date on it, all that kind of stuff, and who created it? Those are the basic principles of something you would authorize as being acceptable. Change our language, so it says, "Map provided by county GIS." We're done. Same bunch of money.
Thank you. Will that fill a requirement, Mr. Simpson?
What the charter says is that you have a legal description. I don't know that the charter actually says meets and bounds. When you do annexations, and the legal description of the city's not gonna change if you do decide to go out for charter. That doesn't, how you change your legal description, you go through the annexation process. The annexation process requires every annexation to be done by meets and bounds. And then you file that with the county and with the Department of State. And so, and so I think it's ultimately gonna be a meets and bounds. To answer your question, it would seem to me to do any type of update on a map, to do a mapping system, a future land use map of the city, you gotta start with what properties are in the city. And that's where they may hit a stumbling block. They, they come to the city and say, "Give us your legal description. The last time we got a legal description was 1994." I don't know if part of the $20,000 was for surveying work to incorporate, to create a new boundary description for the city, because you gotta start with that before you can start saying which properties have what legal description, or what properties have what future land use in the city. Now, I would think going to the county is a great place to start, because when we send them, every annexation we do, we give it to the county, and then the property appraisers' records, who, how they get taxed, changes. Based on that, you know, they pay, if they're in the county, there's certain taxes they pay. If they're in the city, there's other taxes they pay. So the county property appraisers and tax assessor's office has to have the most accurate version. The county doesn't care what our land use is only because, they don't deal with that. But the property appraiser and the tax collector have to know which parcel of property is in an incorporated area and which parcel of property is an unincorporated area to do the taxes properly. So they should have a very good map from which I would think a meets, our 94 meets and bounds description could be modified to be current. And then we just need to update it regularly after we do that. So that would seem a logical place for me to start. Instead, you don't want to survey or start and just from scratch. Re-trawn out this whole city. That would be very time-consuming, very expensive. I would start with the 94, if that's the most recent you have. I would pull the property appraisers' records to say, these, according to property appraiser, these records, these parcels are in our city, but they're not incorporated in our legal description. So we need a legal description that incorporates these parcels. That's how I would go about resolving the problem. Does that help?
I imagine that's changed a lot since 1994, to say the least.
You know, I don't know how many annexations this city's done. We, no one's done de-annexation, so there's one that got out of the city.
Correct.
So it's, how many annexes, annexations have we done since 94?
I can answer that question.
Come in.
Remember when I attacked, in a local agreement with county, we annexed 90% of Indian Harbor.
Yes, states, Indian Harbor.
And then we did...
There's some stuff on the west side.
Yeah, it was just, uh, Trail Avenue, and some of the world. There was roughly about 250 altogether at that time.
But they were probably isolated areas where we went.
There were forced annexations, they weren't voluntary either.
Yeah, it was that agreement with the county. I'm sorry, they agreed in a local agreement with the county.
I went to the county, had them sign it.
Yeah, that, their local service boundary agreement. I guess we did.
This, this zoning map is certified, and it runs from the annexations from 1998 through 2015.
Okay.
So there hasn't been one of these done that I'm aware of since 2015.
Who did that?
County.
County put that together?
Yes. Yep. But here's the question that jumps in my mind immediately. Can you submit and not have that information for a vote?
Can you submit what? Yeah, if you're gonna submit specific questions, nobody submits a question on boundary. You're never gonna submit that question. That's not the one, if you all decide to amend anything, that's not gonna be one you amend. Because like I said, you do that through, it's already been amended through the adoption of annexation ordinances. You just don't have accumulated, a document accumulates all these changes and says, "Based on these annexations, this is what our boundary map looks like." But the boundaries already been amended. Every time you do an annexation, you amend the city.
Mend it, yeah. Okay.
So you're not gonna submit that question to the...
Okay. Okay, anything else? Y'all?
So basically with that Appendix A thing, we would essentially leave it and then scramble as fast as we can to update our...
Working on it.
Right, I got you.
Yeah, it's not part of the charter.
There you go, Jerome.
I'll have to the list.
Yes, podium?
Can we basically be dismissed after today?
Dismiss it?
No, from the charter review.
Charter review committee be...
Dismissed?
Dismissed is what he's asking.
Yeah, we're 10 minutes to the regular meeting, so.
What we're saying?
The resolution, that point, does it say when? When it, when it's incidental or something like that?
Doesn't say, I've seen that.
In the resolution itself?
Never seen it.
Aren't they asking to be disbanded? That's what, yeah.
Pretty much done anything.
Yeah, all they want, all they intend on doing.
We have another public meeting on the charter?
No.
This is it?
There's gonna be a lot of public meetings on the charters, though.
Yeah.
Y'all, maybe not them, that's what they're really asking. Uh, you know, I think the resolution addresses the issue, but my, unless there's some reason that they, they feel they need to be dismissed for whatever reason, which I can't, I don't understand, I don't know. You know, I think the resolution addresses the issue, but unless there's some reason that they feel they need to be dismissed for whatever reason, which I can't, I don't understand, I don't know. If you came up through your deliberations that you wanted them to consider something, a change or a modification, if you disband them, then you're gonna have to reappoint them.
Yes.
And I would just say, now they may, once they, I think the way, what it says is, once they submit their final report, they're dissolved. But if it doesn't, so there's no action that you need to be done, but if there's action that you need to take to dissolve them, I would wait to make sure you did not want to refer them to give you an opinion on something that they didn't give you an opinion on, because otherwise, if you disband them, you're gonna have to...
Yeah, because there could be public input.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because what you're gonna have to go through, I would have came earlier, but I don't know, I'm talking about this, but... You've gotta put together valid title, valid summary, questions, valid questions. All those things have to, you have limited number of words for each question, or are you gonna put them together as a group? One question, all changes as one? These are things that y'all have to decide, and those ordinances have to come back to you for approval.
Would the charter committee then work with the commission to come up with those questions? Okay, that was my question. No, you said...
I think we talked about that when I was at the last charter meeting. I said, you know, are y'all gonna, is the charter review commission gonna propose valid title, valid summary, valid questions, or let y'all decide? I know we talked about it, I can't remember what the discussion was, but we generally talked about it. That's really the next, the big step, is for y'all to decide which questions get submitted, and then we have to go forward and draft those ordinances that allow you to adopt them, to submit the question to the vote.
So what we're saying, the committee, charter committee is still under the sun, Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Unless you quit. Unless I quit.
All right, we got it all? Is there a motion?
Motion's adjourned.
Is there any question?
Charter review meeting is adjourned. We have six minutes before the regular commission meeting.
Stretch your legs, get your best one.
Yep. Yep, yep, yep.